All right. We're calling this meeting to order today. This is the Planning Commission, a regular meeting of the Planning Commission for Wednesday, June 6, 2012. May I have your call, please?
Commissioner Astorian.
Here.
Commissioner Lee. Commissioner Shitz.
Here.
Commissioner Yessaiyan.
Here.
And Chairperson Landrigan.
Here. May I have a report regarding the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, May 30, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Astorian.
Please follow me, the pledge to our flag of our nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, to the liberty and justice for all.
Now, we have minutes from May 16, 2012. Has everybody read those?
We accept the minutes from meeting Wednesday, May 16?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
We now are at oral communications. I don't have any cards for oral communications. If you wish to speak on an item that's not on the agenda, this is the time you can do it. And seeing no one, we will close oral communications. We're on item six, zoning appeal. We have none, if that's correct. And now we are on item seven. Perfect timing. Mr. Lee, will you please record that Commissioner Lee has joined us? Planning Commission item, old business tentative parcel map, Glendale number 1628. It was continued, but I would like to remind everybody that the hearing was also closed. It was continued for items specific to our requests. And so if the staff report can reflect as such, that would be wonderful. Thank you, sir.
Madam Chairman, members of the Commission, as mentioned, this is a continued case from May 2, 2012, for tentative parcel map GLN 1628 located at 2116 Rimcrest Drive. The Commission opened the public hearing, took testimony on both sides of the case, and closed the public hearing. The Commission decided to continue the case through this meeting to allow the applicant an opportunity to show that he can modify the house on Lot 3 to comply with the hillside design guidelines or modify the parcel map to create one additional lot instead of two. Project Architect has submitted updated plans, which I have posted on the panels behind you. If you'd like, I can quickly run through what's up there.
Thank you.
As for background, I have parcel two site plan as well as the proposed elevations. Have the site plan for parcel three, and then option one and option two of the floor plans, which the architect will go into detail on, the two options that he came up with, as well as the proposed parcel map, the plan showing the paths and retaining walls as part of the beginning part of the subdivision. And then we have the proposed elevations that the applicant is providing, showing the modifications to the elevation for Lot 3 as compared to the previous one the Commission sought in last meeting. And then the floor plans that go with that. Staff is recommending approval based off of the new plans that were submitted for Lot 3, and I'm available for any questions if the Board has questions.
Any questions for staff?
The applicant has a slide presentation.
All right.
Maybe as part of their, or depending on what the Commission decides.
So, the public hearing will be based upon the new submission for Lot 3. So if I can have, the applicant who is Hamlet, Zohar M., with an S, correct?
Yes.
Sorry, Zohar M.
Madam Chair, are you reopening the public hearing?
I am. I'm sorry, did I just think that? I am opening the public hearing for purpose of taking a public hearing.
And then the rest of the public gets to testify on this information being presented now?
Information being presented now. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Well, yes. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. For the record, my name is Hamlet Zorabians. I'm the project architect. And as the staff reminded us, that we are only here to respond to the few items that last time was raised. There were some questions regarding Lot 3 specifically. And so in order for me to compile all my answers together, I chose to write, and I'm just going to read my notes. And then we have a accompanying presentation, which is a conceptual, it shows basically the conceptual design of the building in a three-dimensional mode. So you can actually get a feel of how the building is articulated and so on and so forth. I think that should be very helpful to imagine in that way, rather than going to a two-dimensional, you know, view of it. I think that will help us. So obviously, the model is not here, but you've already seen the physical model. So let me explain, one of the questions that Commissioners raised was regarding compliance with the hillside guidelines, which obviously, in a very lengthy detail, is all spelled out in the staff report that was submitted last time. But as far as architects' point of view, how we achieved that and how we have come to this solution, and I'm going to read my notes, and if there's any questions at the end, I'll be able to answer specifically with that. So this is in response to the few of the concerning, actually, the questions that you raised last time. We have carefully analyzed the site to identify locations that offer the best opportunities for building. In the process, we also identified the site constraints to further define the most suitable location for the site. Because one of the issues last time was the site. Is this the correct location where you put the building? Are there any alternatives? Obviously, the time did not allow me to explain, because it's a much longer time needed. So what we've done, I tried to formulate it and condense it for you, so I can actually present that. Existing contours are closer together at the westerly half of the site, where the site is the narrowest. This suggests that the easterly half of the site is less steep and more suitable for building. As the hillside guidelines recommend, we have kept our selection, as far as the location is now concerned, to the bottom of the hill, for obvious, very obvious reason, of preserving the hillside and minimizing grading. So that was based on the recommendation that is spelled out in the hillside ordinance. Therefore, three possible locations. We have depicted on our plans, and you have received 11 by 17 copies of that. So we tried to, first, our effort was to go and explore any other locations that might fit the description and the hillside ordinance. So then, the exhibits are before you. In the first option, proposed building was located in the westerly half of the Lot 3, very obvious reason. Unfortunately, because of the narrowness and steepness of the site, in this location, required retaining walls would not comply with the zoning or hillside ordinances because of the resulting heights in excess of those allowed in the zoning ordinances. So it's very obvious, when we tested it, the retaining walls yielded much, much higher heights. And that's in the exhibits. You can see, it's in an order of 17 feet even, rather than a 3, 5 retaining wall, one after another. So what we did, then again, we took the second option. So if I continue, it says the second, well, this is what I wrote. In the second option, the proposed building location is moved to the middle of the proposed Lot 3. This option failed also, as tested, and you have the figures there, too. To comply with the zoning and hillside guidance because of the similar reasons. And if you look at, there are bubbles there that depict the different locations of the retaining walls, it will tell you how high the retaining walls went. So the, so this option also failed to comply with the zoning and hillside guidelines because of the similar reasons. So then, not being able to fit the building on the top of the hill, which is against the ordinance requirements and recommendations, the other two locations failed, as far as, you know, the retaining walls, to be able to comply with the hillside ordinances. So therefore, then the third and only logical location was reexamined. We went back and started reexamining our own location that we had depicted last time. And as presented in the last public hearing, we found that we tested it, and it obviously, in every way that we are thinking of, which I will explain to you, and we're going to go over the points, it meets all the ordinances, especially beginning with the retaining walls, as far as the size of them, quantity of them, both for zoning and hillside ordinances. Now, this location meets all the requirements I wrote of both zoning and hillside ordinances as reviewed by the City of Glendale Planning Department staff, and we concur with them. Now, the proposed subdivision retains the existing natural drains pattern while preserving the existing primary swell located just east of proposed property line between Lot 10 and 3. The way we situated it is that there is an existing swell located right between Lots 2 and 3 when they're separating. So that is kept there, basically. Then further, new concrete swells are proposed behind the retaining walls, per code, retaining walls to convey the rainwater into the existing primary swells whereby, to conduct the existing catch basin. Now, the catch basin that existing there, it's within the easement area. This is something that is specifically, it's in easement area, which we are respecting, we're not touching that at all. So conveying storm water away from the undeveloped slope will reduce amount of ground saturation and reduce the possibility of undermining the slope. Proposed additional concrete swells to improve existing drainage system will certainly improve existing undeveloped slope stability by diverting the storm water away from the building before they saturate the soil itself. Now, we have articulated the building. Now, if you can pay attention to the three-dimensional. I made a statement last time. It is difficult to, and when I, when we go to DRB, that's going to be actually the case, because it's very difficult to depict and show a modern-looking building, if you will, in a 2D dimension. Because it speaks of the, what is important there is the different surfaces, different planes that they come and coincide with each other. So this is a view from, you know, this is a view of west-south corner of the property, looking at the building itself. As you can see, the building is very well articulated. And as I'm reading this next paragraph, please pay attention to, if you will, to the 3D model. We have articulated building exterior walls using combination of translucent windows and interrupted solid walls. To follow the topography, we have set the second floor back at least seven feet. And again, that was a concern that was raised, because certain portion of that particular building was two-story, and it could be viewed as a massive, you know, portion of the building. So what we did there, we basically took that off, and we, and the new redesigned plan includes that, where we completely, second floor sits back seven feet from the first floor. We have depicted the building envelope that follows the slope. This is the method that every, where you can see that, in order for you to be able to show that the building itself will go parallel with the contours and respects the contours of the site, it's a method that is respected and used in every other city that there is. So what we have done here, we went back, and what we did, we have depicted a building envelope that follows the slope contours and made sure that the building profile fits in the envelope. So when you refer to that drawings that it's, you know, affixed there, you can see the building envelope. You can see a dash line which defines that envelope, which goes with the contours, the existing contours there. So we have made sure that the building itself will fit in that envelope. So nothing is going to protrude from that envelope out. Now, major part of the first floor is built into the hillside. That is very obvious. From the buildings, you can see, the major part of the first floor is just into the hillside. To diminish visual impact and mass and scale, there are no existing buildings near or adjacent to proposed buildings to mitigate. There's nothing that, no building that is very close to the building itself, so there's no mitigation as far as that's concerned. Since the proposed buildings are facing southeast, will not disturb the sunlight patterns of existing neighborhood buildings across the roadway. It's very, very obvious, because they're facing the south, there is no shadow that is going to be cast over the other buildings. Thereby, it's not going to have any limitations as far as the shadow, and so it's not going to block the sun rays, which is one of the things. Proposed setbacks not only meet the zoning requirements, the way we have it, because of the largeness of the lots that we have, okay? But they exceed the minimum requirements, as well as the prevailing setbacks of the existing buildings on the street. No HVAC units will be located on the roof, and condenses will be also located, I'm sorry, I'm under the weather a little bit today, so excuse my voice. Condenses will be located at the rear of the buildings and screened away from the street. Locational fire department standpipe and connections will be determined by the Glendale Fire Department at the point of time, and that's, they're going to be located in the landscaped areas and screened from the view. And the trash storage will be located behind the building and screened by the stone-faced concrete walls matching the stone-lined retaining walls. Now, the solar energy panels will be integrated within the roof structure. Building receives the south sun, which is the most efficient. Building will be built with low-energy-efficient dual-glazed windows, which currently are the best the industry offers at this time. In compliance with the building codes, all walls will be obviously insulated with energy for energy conservation. Building is not proposing to alter land form for the purposes of screening yards, because that was one of the also questions. And use of retaining walls was limited to those minimally required by code to build the proposed structure. Nothing extra and over above that. All proposed retaining walls will be faced with natural stones to complement the building and fit the topography. Here, I just want to mention also that there was a question that was raised, as far as why we have that 15-foot setback behind the building itself. And I have a copy of the requirements of grading and building and safety, which is, this is 2010 code, which requires to have that 15-foot setback if you have a living space. That could be eliminated for the garages, because it's not a living space, so then you can actually design an impact wall, which we have done in the portion of it. But within that area there, that 15-foot is a requirement, so we are meeting that requirement as far as that is concerned. So we wanted to explain that point as well, so we don't have any further issues with that. The proposed driveway will be safe, sightlines and distance, and proposed garage is integrated into the building, and garage door is oriented away, as you can see, from the street, it's actually perpendicular to the street, and it's not facing the street. Proposed driveway will be permeable, interlocking stone pavers to reduce the stormwater runoff, which will be obviously addressed, again, in DRB session if we go further. Proposed landscaping will include native plants that are fire-resistant. As a fire-prevention measure, we have provided a clear area around the structure. The balance of existing slope will remain ungraded, open space, which comprises well over 50% of the site itself. There are no existing mature trees on the site, other than the cypress trees, that are within the first five feet of the front edge of the lot. These trees will be cleaned and trimmed where possible, and will be integrated into the proposed landscaping pallet. We're not proposing to remove those trees at all. There are no existing oak, bay, or sycamore trees within the site. Oil-proposed retaining walls will be faced with natural stone to complement overall building design. The colors will be of natural earth tones to blend the proposed structure into the hillside landscape. And in our elevations, we have depicted what colors they are. And they're not going to be very bright colors, they're very earth-ton colors. And similar colors that we have used in a couple of other projects to, and they blend very well with the slope there is. And also, there was another, maybe, maybe we can leave that for, you know, response for the questions. But if you, Patrick, if you can just go over the design itself, just a few of the clips we can show you, so you can get a sense of how building is there. Unfortunately, this is not very high resolution, and we have it in our iPads, which is really high resolution, it's very difficult to see here.
Just to clarify, is this Lot 3?
This is Lot 3.
What we're looking at?
This is Lot 3, yes. So, Pat, if you can go to the other, let's see, switch the, you can see one after another. I wish you could, you could see difference of the colors with the retaining walls and everything there. But this is, this gives you the articulation of the building itself. Now, mind you, that eventually, we have to go before DRB, and the DRB, they're going to, you know, look at this project, obviously, as far as the style is concerned. We're not very rigid saying that we're going to have a modern building there, were any. But this is what depicting, very schematic phase, and it's a preliminary schematic building that we have. And as you can see, this is, this is from the north, northeast corner of the building We had actually a presentation that we could actually turn the building itself, so you could see all around it. Unfortunately, the way the system is, we cannot use that. But we do have that available, if you wanted to see that.
Is the seven, the seven-foot setback, is that where the balcony is?
Uh...
In the front. Can you point?
Yeah.
Point to where it is?
Well, it's not, the difference on the first floor, where the walls are, and the second floor, where the walls are, that's seven feet. Now, there was the setback of the second floor from first floor is seven feet, the way we have it. And why we went that way? Because we depicted, as I said, an envelope that shows, follows the contour. And within that envelope, this is what it gave us. In other words, I had to set it back. So rightly so last time, when you mentioned it. We went back and saw, I said, okay, there is a segment in the building that is two-story looking. So what can we do there? Let's fit this thing in the envelope. So that's what we've done. We've set it back, obviously reduced, you know, our second floor. But that's what we've done there. But...
Do we want to let the applicant finish his presentation before we question him?
Yeah.
Okay. And so, do we have it? Yeah, sure, you can, if you want to do that. You can see the original one, and you can see the difference, what happened there. If you can, Pat, you can depict that particular area there, it would be great.
Hmm.
You see how it is? I mean, we had a segment, 50% of it, basically. It was already forward. And you can see to the left, how the windows are going up, they were in the same plane. Now, the revised one is taking the second floor seven feet pushing back. It's setting back itself. Pat, can we go to the other clip, so we can... Now, this is the Lot 3, that one. So you can see that that segment there already has pushed back. Yes, in certain portions of it, where it's above the first floor, we had the opportunity to have terraces, but the first floor is underneath it. I mean, it's just not cantilevering out, per se. Anything that is cantilevering out is just for the aesthetic reasons that we're doing. So this is a very conceptual elevations that you see here. Once, obviously, I think it's clear, that when we go through the DRB, they're going to have to take a look at it. If there is anything that we have to, again, massage and finalize it, we'll be able to do. Even the style of it. And so, do you like to see the other one? I mean, do you have the...
Well, your time is nearly up, so...
Okay, all right. So I'll stop here.
How would you like to use it?
Okay, no, I will stop here, and I'll resume my time, just to be able to respond. And also, I have all the engineers here. If there's any questions or anything further, you can ask, and then we can be available for it.
All right. If that concludes it, I can ask my Commissioner, fellow Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant before we continue with the public hearing?
Well, I want to say that I really appreciate that you went, took the time, and thoughtfully went through describing exactly how you came up with the layouts you came up with and the placement of the lots that you came up with. This is really the type of description I was looking for. So I appreciate that you went through the time to do that.
Thank you. You're welcome. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments?
Can we, I'd like to see that other, the diagram of the other lot.
We're only, we're only talking on this lot because of the, the hearing was closed on the other portions, this is the only portion that we actually continued to hear. So I think that that would be inappropriate.
Okay.
So, thank you. You may take a seat, and we will open the public hearing.
Thank you very much.
And at the public hearing, when I call you, I would appreciate you focusing your comments on what we continued, which is Lot 3 and the redesigns. And if you have already made a comment and you're repeating yourself, I will remind you that we already have that on record. We are not opening the public hearing to hear everything that we heard last time, because that is already on the record. So if you all would please work with me in those confines, I really appreciate it, and I will call you all up. And you will have three minutes each. You may use it all or not. And will Malish be decide...
Yes, I donated my time to the...
Kurt Nelson. Typically, we don't donate more than three other minutes, so you may have six minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Kurt Nelson. Address is 3 Newport Center Drive, or Corporate Plaza Drive in Newport Beach. I, by the way, I think that's a beautiful house. And I'm not here to say anything about anything, except the fact that the point that has been missed, I was contacted by the owners, because in 1984, well into about 1990, I was with, I was developing the houses up on Aspen Oak and Rimcrest as one of the project managers for JCC Enterprises. I'm a real estate broker. I acted as a paralegal for JCC, among other duties, for many years. And I formed the Glendale High, helped to form the Glendale Highlands Homeowners Association. The problem with this project is not engineering necessarily, or architectural, or anything like that. The problem is that this lot, 2116 Rimcrest, which is parcel C, I believe, of parcel map 1355A, is one of 40-some-odd lots that are encumbered by a declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions that were recorded by First Interstate Bank in August of 1983. My company, me in particular, reviewed those CCNRs prior to our purchase of the lots from First Interstate Bank's REO program. I, just to be sure, because it has been a lot of years, I contacted one of the senior title officers from my title insurance company to make certain that 2116 Rimcrest was among the lots owned by First Interstate Bank at the time the declaration was recorded. And then I had them check again, and they verified it again. And then I contacted the attorney who drafted, I know him quite well, Robert Smiley, still in business in LA, who wrote the CCNRs. He's a real estate attorney and a specialist. And he assured me, yeah, that my take on the restrictions was accurate. I made a copy of the declaration, and I gave five copies of it. Very lengthy, the print is kind of small. To concern, and I understand that Bradley Collin has given the city attorney a copy, and you don't need me to tell you what's legal about it and what's not, your city attorney can do that. My opinion, and it's an educated one, is that what needs to happen here is this project needs to be run by the concerned homeowners and address their issues, or an approval by the city is simply going to engender a lawsuit. I spent 20-some years on the sides of podiums like this endorsing and begging by... and begging bodies like yourself to approve projects. This feels weird to me. I don't have a dog in this race. But my mortgage was paid and my kids fed for a number of years by these people who bought homes from us. They relied in good faith on the CCNRs. And I made sure that everyone that bought a home from us got a copy of them. Just the high points of what is a problem here is that the CCNRs run with the land. They bind every successor and interest. Any owner, regardless of whether the homeowners association is active or not, has a legal right to try to enforce the restrictions and the covenants and the conditions against any other owner, which would include 2116. Among the more specific conditions is that no lot, and parcel C is classified and defined in the declaration as a lot, can be used for any purpose other than a single-family residence. You cannot add lots or homes to the project without a vote of at least, I think it's 66.66% of the homeowners. This project, as I understand it, would effectively add two additional homes to the project. The recitals, among other things, say we are setting down here for all of these encumbered properties, the uniform plan of development. Those are the big ones. And then the smaller ones that are just as problematic is that can't have any machinery or equipment. It's prohibited. Even your air conditioning compressor could probably be a target unless it is obscured from view and screened from other lots in the street. I don't know what they're going to say about grading equipment. Prohibits any noxious or offensive activity that could become or be an annoyance or a nuisance to the other homeowners. That covers stuff like putting your Chevy up on, you know, to redo the engine in the front yard, grading you can imagine. But less facetiously, it charges every owner to maintain the slope, the ratios, the integrity of the existing slopes and the drainage devices within the tract in the pattern put in place by the original declarant. That is the purpose of the homeowners association. And that is, as my recollection and Mr. Smiley's, was in part at the insistence of the city of Glendale when they approved the Arbach subdivisions. And that is why no change to that section of the CCNRs can take place without the city. The HOA couldn't even do it themselves. I would hope for a happy ending for everybody. I would hope that the applicant gets together. Maybe they can address the concerns. All I'm here to do is tell you that the city, I'm pretty sure, would have a legal right to approve things that are barred by the declaration. But it would be a little like...
Will you be able to wrap it up quickly?
Wrap it up? Mm-hmm. But it would be a little bit like if I came to the city and said, I got a pit bull here I'd like to take home with me and my condo association bars dogs, but you'll license it. So I hope you can work it out.
Thank you, sir. Just one second. Mr. Nelson, we have a question for you.
I don't know if it's necessarily to Mr. Nelson, but I wanted to direct the question to either staff or city attorney.
Please do.
Obviously, this is a new document that's before us. And the CCNR, city attorney, obviously, you know, the subdivision, you know, is allowed, you know, by the state code. And the CCNR, obviously, is a guidance for the homeowners association and the neighborhood there. What trumps over what?
Members of the planning commission, planning commissioner Lee. The CCNRs, as was indicated, are a private agreement. It's recorded against the lots within the homeowners association, the parcels. And it really binds not the city. It's separate and distinct from the zoning code. The city is required to enforce its laws that are on the books, which include the Subdivision Map Act, the zoning ordinance, the general plan, insurance that any proposal meets the... Is compliant with the general plan or specific plan. The CCNRs are, again, a private agreement between the purchasers of those individual lots and the homeowners association. Those... It's a non-profit corporation. And they do have certain laws and powers and restrictions that they can impose within the CCNRs. And Mr. Nelson is correct that in most CCNRs, there are review requirements and enforcement capability if certain requirements are not fulfilled by property owners or maintained by property owners. So it is... Does not bind the planning commission in any way, shape, or form from approving an application for a subdivision, should it comply with the requirements of the Subdivision Map Act.
Understood, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Nelson or staff? Thank you for that, sir. Steve Iskaderian.
I've already said everything I...
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to go ahead and talk.
Charles Santos will have six minutes.
Chair Landrigan, we don't have an ability to time for six minutes. We could time for five minutes or 10 minutes.
Well, give them five minutes and then if they go over, I'll... Too long, we'll...
That's plenty. My name's Charles Santos. And I wanted to discuss, not so much as Kurt Nelson obviously covered the CCNRs, which I think are an important topic and an important item here, but more the sequel review and the negative declaration that was prepared and several items in the sequel review that I wanted to highlight on. One being biology. As far as I know, there was no biology report prepared for the site or a wildlife study. And I think that's an important component of a project of this magnitude. Number two is geology. I don't believe a full geology and soils engineering report, basically onsite exploration was conducted, drilling of the site and analyzing the geology. Another important component is hydrology. I don't know if there's a hydrology analysis that addresses the runoff, how the runoff will be handled and directed over the new paved surfaces and onto the street. There's existing drainage swales and drainage devices there that handle the water and the hydrology. And adding new development and new paved surfaces will obviously increase the flow of runoff and water onto the street and potential flooding. And the fourth topic is a traffic study. I don't believe there was a traffic study prepared that addresses the impacts of the additional traffic on the cul-de-sac and on the surrounding streets. And I think an environmental impact report would address these items comprehensively. And a project of this size, I think an environmental impact report would be adequate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Santos?
I think this question should be answered by our staff as to...
Mr. Collin?
Why we have a negative declaration?
Would you like to explain the negative declaration process?
In terms of the geology and hydrology, our engineering department has reviewed reports for those. They're preliminary. Enough for staff to be able to review it and make a determination that there's no significant environmental effects for those. A formal grading plan will be reviewed by the engineering department, depending on the results of this hearing, plan check, as well as design review board. In terms of biology, there's no known protected species up in that area of plants or wildlife. Basically, a hillside area. Typically, don't see too much of that in Glendale other than your oak or your protected indigenous trees. As it relates to traffic, it's two single-family dwellings, which are permitted both by zoning ordinance and the general plan. And it's not a typical project that would generate lots of traffic that we wouldn't normally see in a single-family zone.
And so you had hydrology in there, too?
Hydrology and the geology report, both were reviewed by your engineering department as prior to the decision being made for the negative declaration.
So I think one of the comment was that, you know, why was that not part of this negative declaration? Is there a section in there?
There's a section within the initial study for all of us.
So the material that was submitted was existing? Or was it new material? Was, I think, the question Mr. Santos proposed.
Sorry?
So, the reports, there is no biology report because...
Because there's no endangered species or protected plants that are basically in that area known as doubt.
And the hydrology and the geology are existing? And they were reviewed from existing data from the previous subdivision? Is that... Or is there new data that was presented?
It would be new information that was provided by the applicant based off the new project.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions? That concludes the rim... Charles Santos, I'm sorry, I have one more. I'm so sorry. I have Tanya, is it Mata?
Good evening. My name is Tanya Mata. I'm a neighbor at 140 Aspen Oak Lane. I just want to make sure of one thing. The question is to you guys. Have you guys, each and every single one of you, have you guys been to Aspen Oak Lane personally?
Yes.
Okay, because lot three is right in front of my house. And I look up at the very, very steep mountain and I still cannot imagine a house being built there. I... Every single morning, I look, it's right in front of my house. And even after the presentation, I still cannot imagine it. And it's, I don't know how it's going to be done. It's very hard for me to even comprehend the whole idea. And the second thing is, if this actually goes through, are you setting a precedent? Is every single homeowner in Glendale that has a huge lot, are they going to subdivide and start building homes just to make more money? I mean, I just, I feel like, you know, it's setting a precedent. And I don't think it's a good precedent to set. I'm very opposed to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana Karapetian, do you want to speak on Rimquest? I'll write it on here, yes. Okay, please do, thank you.
I don't want this project to happen. I live on 170 Aspen Oak Lane and also my parents, 166 Aspen Oak Lane. I was wondering about the trees. There are like 25-year-old cypress trees. And they said they're not going to touch it. I just don't understand how they're going to make the driveway or the construction without cutting those trees.
That is something that the applicant can answer in his rebuttal for you. But they are not a protected tree in Glendale.
But they've been there for 25 years. And, you know, that brings a really nice beauty to the street. And it's just going to go. And then my other question is, if somebody needs an ambulance or emergency, are they going to be able to come to the street when there is all that construction going on? Because my parents are, you know, senior citizens. My father is 81 years old and my mom is 75. And also, we have other neighbors. And they get ambulance every day now on our street. So I'm really wondering, is it safe? Is it going to be on time? The construction is not going to bother?
I'll have staff respond to your question for you. Is there any other question?
That's all.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I have no more actually requests to speak on Rimquest. I'm going to ask our applicant to come forward. You have 10 minutes for rebuttal. And then I'll ask staff to answer some of the questions that were presented, unless you can answer them.
Yes, thank you very much. Again, for the record, my name is Hamlet Zorovians. I'm the project architect. And I mentioned before in the opening up the presentation, we have our engineer staff over here present. So as far as geotechnical is concerned, I can ask the geotechnical engineer to answer it. But we do have the report that was submitted. And I think you reiterated that already. You mentioned that. So I think I'm trying to respond to the ones that are not answered. As far as landscaping is concerned, for instance, I have our landscaper here. He can, you know, explain what he's doing with the trees in front, if that would basically be necessary. If there's any questions as far as that's concerned. And the other... Maybe I should just reserve that for the end of my time. But I want to say also that as far as the steepness of the lot, that seems to be a concern there. We basically went back. And since 19... I mean, 2008, I have four projects that they've been designed and they've been approved on 85% slope, 66% slope, 75% slope. And as far as being able to do that, it definitely can be. And it just need to be demonstrated that it will meet all the ordinances, as far as zoning ordinances, both zoning ordinances and hillside ordinances. And this project was developed, you know, working with the staff, planning staff. And we've been working on this project for over a year. So we've... I just wanted to mention that we have gone through it. And that's why we are very much confident as far as the recommendations that the staff has made. We have no problem if there is any conditions that we can attach to, such as last time Commissioner Lee was suggesting as far as times of hours to make it more convenient. And other than that, I don't have anything to rebuttal. Everything was said. We have our engineers here. And if you like to address that particular question that someone raised as far as the landscaping, I have our landscaper here. And so he will be able to answer that. If not, then that's fine. I mean, this will conclude our presentation. And I really appreciate all the responses and questions.
Thank you, Mr. Zorovians. Any questions from the commissioners? Would the staff please clarify the construction requirements for maintaining access to properties during construction?
Are we still going to do the hearing or are we going to...
Well, I just would like that answer to be part of the public hearing.
I understand.
And then I'll close it.
Every... For every building permit, especially in an area like this, it will be required at the time of building permit to submit a construction, a traffic mitigation plan, which, you know, in normal cases would include things like, you know, having flagmen out there when there are going to be construction equipment blocking the streets. So there are already... It's kind of an automatic review of those sorts of situations. I mean, not for ambulances, per se, but for any kind of passenger car vehicle. There will be accommodations.
I might add that any project, when they get the permit, one of the stipulations would be traffic control plan, which would stipulate the state rules and regulations as far as necessary flagmen, necessary delineation, and all of those items. That would be a natural step that would always occur.
And I might say that if the trees are going to be removed and the project is approved, that will also come up at design review and you will have another public hearing to discuss the changes to the hillside and actually the building, which is not what we're addressing at the moment. That concludes the public hearing. And so we are going to go into some deliberation here. Who would like to... Mr. Lee?
What we have here is an application for subdivision. And, you know, we've gone into a... Further into the actually, you know, designing of the house and so on. That process will take place in the DRB. And your covenant, homeowners association, will have a chance to input and put some, I guess, stipulations in there. You know, that's in the CCRs, the covenant. So here we're... We don't like to really... We like to preserve the hillside as much as possible. But the state mandates us to subdivide lots where it is allowed to subdivide. And that's what we have here. And he can have had... And he can, he can have had where, where, you know, he can put his house on it. So as I said, as long as he misses hillside ordinances in, in his design and during the DRB process and during the, you know, later time, you have plenty opportunity to, to, I guess, again, speak out and put your concerns during that time, but I am again, you know, going towards approving this project.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
I'll go ahead. I think the concerns we've raised before about the design and things like that, I know there's a DRB process, but when we approve subdivisions like this, especially when they're on hillside, they're especially important because the site layout sometimes dictates the design and what the site layout we approve is basically final. So I think having a say about stuff like that is really crucial and important. The concerns that I raised last time, I think they've been addressed and I think the applicant has done a good faith effort to go through why they chose the exact site that they chose. It was the explanation I was looking for and I'm glad that setback was put in for the second story for Lot 3. I'm not crazy about this project. I, I know there's a lot of controversy of, obviously, for it and hopefully the applicant and the neighbors can come together and compromise that was suggested earlier today on some kind of solution, so it doesn't have to get any more complicated than this. But I'm going to go ahead and approve it because of my concerns being addressed, so it can move on to the next stage.
I'll go ahead.
Mr. Sheets.
For my part, I tend to agree with my fellow commissioners that have spoken already, but what I'd like to say about it is I have difficulty with going as far as we did because it confuses the issue of what we're doing here to, to the, the subdivide. I understand the logic that, that the subdivision will then allow certain types of construction, but there are additional review processes beyond this that will question that, will review that in such detail that will determine whether it's appropriate or not and, and the end result could be much different than we're seeing today. So from just the standpoint of what our charge is here to subdivide, I see no problems with that. I'll commend the, the owner for, for their team and the dedication and consistency to go back to review, to course, to respond to what we've discussed here and, and it made it clear in my mind what efforts you did make to try to make the best of what the site is. But I would speak to the, to the residents. Part of what I've dealt with from the first time you've been here was kind of you guys are ahead of the game, you're really not done yet and, and you voiced your concerns in a very vocal way. I understand that, but they really, as I stated in our first meeting, you're ahead of the game and that we, although they were part of the record, all they did is cloud the issue of what we're really doing here in the planning commission for the sub, for the track map. So all of these items are, are good for you to go forward and, and I would say organize in a more consistent fashion what's important and what order when you go forward at, at the future meetings they have to discuss a design, to come up with a good design. So I just, I add that as just some thought that the, the efforts are good, if you can coordinate them and bring them together in one, one organized fashion, I think you'll have a better representation of what your concerns are and how they impact, would impact this future, future project. So that's my thoughts.
Commissioner Astorian.
Madam Chair, at this time I have no deliberative comments, I have other comments, but this is not the proper forum. Thank you.
You're welcome. Well, gentlemen, I have questions because it is a site planning exercise as far as I'm concerned. So the buildings, the fact that you can do it and set back is, is actually far, the cart isn't, you know, before fixing the cart up before you have horse. The property was graded when it was built, this is not a natural slope, so it's already been graded. And, you know, every time another project comes along, you grade it again. So the cumulative impacts are not something we really address in our zoning code. When we come to the parcel map, we don't do a lot of them, but what it does is it gives you a maximum that you could do on a site in a perfect situation. So if you have a square footage, you would be able to subdivide this lot and if it were flat, you could easily put three lots on it, but it's not flat. And so we have this formula, which is really strange. If you look at the current average slope, it's very misleading because where you put your lot lines allows you to create the average, you know, slope, current slope. So in areas where if a person were looking at it and, and they were normal and they would say, why would you ever build a house on something that looks like a cliff? So to me, this property, if you look at Lot 3, in my hearts of hearts, I think it should not be used as a lot. So the option that I was hoping that would come back would be to look at the whole property and, and to try to assess a proper site plan regardless of what the maximum is. What does this site truly say is appropriate for it? And, and not to justify the choice you want, your economic incentive, what is truly the appropriate site planning here? I didn't hear that. Now, to me, that is troublesome. It also, I think the most sacred thing there is, is not the law of the city of Glendale, but the agreement people have among each other in covenants and codes. And I think that, to me, that's something that we need to honor when we come to the city and that it wasn't is troubling to me. Now, I know that it should not become part of my decision-making, but if I'm assuming that every, that a slope and a lot are going to be set in stone based upon this, I'm assuming the city probably had something to do with it. How many times can you subdivide a lot? Can, after you assume that it's set in stone and it's been recorded, can you just come back and then disregard the agreement you had? Obviously you can. To me, that is, that's a very poor way to be a neighbor. I can't stop it. I, I take great umbrage at assuming that you can use one law to get your way despite the fact that you have this other agreement. Those are my thoughts, some of them are professional, some of them are emotional, but I will not be voting for this because I don't think it's the correct use of this site. I think that there are better ways to do site planning, I don't think the tool to do a site planning with is an engineer's ability to put something on a slope, it's the ability to look at the slope and whether it's an appropriate place to have a building. And those are my thoughts, I'm happy to have a motion.
I move that upon consideration of tentative parcel map number GLN 1628 and after reviewing the records, files, reports and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to said tentative parcel map, the tentative parcel map number GLN 1628 is hereby approved subject to compliance with the 24 conditions listed below and the planning commission hereby makes each and all of the following findings of fact, that includes A through H and conditions 1 through 24.
Yeah.
And I didn't, I didn't see that, but I think there were some time limitations that which I have suggested.
No, it's 24--
It does.
H5.
Which one? I'm sorry, where is it?
It's on the top, 24.
No, you hit, you had mentioned some time.
Yeah, yeah.
We're talking on the construction--
Right.
Construction time, yeah.
Well, the recommendation that was made last week.
Yes, I think that was in the, the--
Environmental.
We have to do the environmental first.
Oh, do the environmental first.
Commissioner, Commissioner Lee, if you'd like to--
Where's, where's the environmental one? Is that, is that the, the resolution?
Yes, there's environmental resolution, you'd want to approve the environment, environmental resolution and then you could take action on the project.
Sure. So I move to approve resolution of the planning commission pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Sheets. May I have roll call, please?
Commissioner Astorian.
Abstain.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheets.
Aye.
Commissioner Yessaien.
Aye.
Chairperson Landrigan.
No.
So to continue with my motion, there was a, there was a comments that I made last time, it wasn't the meeting minutes, or was it?
It was in the meeting minutes, here's--
Here's the--
Ah, here it is. It's actually in the staff report.
I think it was something like 10 to 4 or something like that.
Correct. Right here.
Yeah, 10 to 4.
Mm-hmm.
For that to be incorporated in there and I also had mentioned about increased number of street cleaning, so if those two could be part, become part of this motion.
Second, a second as amended by Commissioner Lee.
We have a motion and a second, may I have roll call, please?
Commissioner Astorian.
Abstain.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheets.
Aye.
Commissioner Yessaien.
Aye.
Chairperson Landrigan.
No. This has been, thank you so much, the motion has passed and we will move on to our next item. Do I have to read that this is--
Appeal process.
There is an appeal process? No, you don't.
This wasn't an appeal.
No? Only for--
Okay.
So only for grievances we do that?
We have, we will have a five-minute recess. We have, we will have a five-minute recess.
Thank you very much.
Didn't get a chance to read this whole thing.
I have agenda from this one. Oh, don't tell us that.
Yeah. Oh, we're going to the first.
Welcome back to the Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, June 6, 2012. We will continue with our agenda, which is item two, subdivision of land tentative tract map number 71786. This was continued from May 16, 2012. It's the location of 432 Myrtle Street. And may I have the staff report?
Yeah. I have the chair. 432 Myrtle Street.
Your speaker.
That's why they're calling, sorry.
Bell's ringing.
All right, bells ringing. So as I mentioned, they're converting a four-unit apartment building that's under construction into a condominium. The project is located at 432 Myrtle Street, which is in west side of Glendale from here around Pacific Avenue over in that direction, south of the 134 freeway. The project went through design review board back in 2008 and the building permit that followed. And the, as we look through the staff report, this is the project that you all, I presented to you that there was a public notice issue that's been resolved and I went by and checked it and it looks, you know, it's fine. The project again is four units, has 11 parking spaces, multi-family zone, it's all per code. It met the design review standards that the board approved. Look at the development features standards, everything meets code, including the density, the heights, recreational amenities. They don't have any, but they have common open space. They meet their parking, landscaping and private outdoor space. We have, looking in compliance with the general plan, we looked at the circulation element. The street does exceed the ideal standard for a local street right of way, so it's good noise levels. It's considered a normally acceptable for dwelling units. It's consistent with the housing element. Historic preservation concerns were studied during the design review process and was not found to be of any issue. The applicant did pay the development impact fee for laboratories and parks. And so staff is recommending approval of the tract map. The, we have conditions from Public Works, Engineering, the Planning Division, Water and Power Division or Department and Building and Safety. And we have an attached motion for approval with the conditions. I can go into more detail, but if you need some more information. And it's all behind you. I meant to, actually I apologize. It's on the left side over here. If you look at the board on the panel, you can see in the colored map, four units, typical 50-foot wide lot. And I've actually been to the site. It's consistent so far as I can see, but they're still in the final stages of construction, getting closer to the end. With the condition, staff feels that this project would be consistent with the general plan and subdivision map act.
Thank you, Mr. Baxter. Any questions for Mr. Baxter?
Quick question. The fees for parks?
Yes, sir.
Are they the same for apartments, rental property as they are for condo?
That one I don't know. I do know they pay half upfront and they pay half at the end when they, before they get their certificate of occupancy. And they have followed that. I spoke with somebody from Parks and Recreation for the process. Whether it's consistent with, the same with apartments versus condominium, I, well, I tell you what, I do know. Actually, I do know. I was told, if we look at it in reverse, is there a change, additional fees for the project becoming a condominium? And the lady who talked to me said, no. So the two are the same. When he came, yeah, when he came in for apartment, this is the fee that they're paying now. Because it becomes a condominium, it does not change according to.
But if it were to start as a condominium, would it have a higher fee?
That's a fair point.
And is this a method of shortchanging the parks?
That's a good point. I don't know that, ma'am.
As I guess the question.
Does, is there some we could find?
Yeah, there is, there are fees that the city imposes on all new dwelling units. There is also, I believe, an additional Quimby fee, which is applied only to subdivisions. It says condominiums, so it is an extra fee beyond what is apartments pay.
Okay. Any other, was your question answered?
Well, I guess with the additional information, have those fees been paid?
The additional one, the Quimby, that I'm not sure, aware of, sir.
Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, the fees were initially paid at the time that the.
Half.
Half the fee, right. It's half and half, the way that the ordinance is drafted at this time. At the time of building permit submission and then the second half paid prior to the release of the.
Occupancy.
Yeah, certificate of occupancy, correct. The, they would not need to pay additional fees at the time of map conversion in that there are no new, net new units being constructed. This is relative to the impact that's generated by a new residential unit on parks and recreation facilities. So since there aren't any net new units being constructed, but simply a conversion in the ownership or possession form of the unit from a rental to a condominium. So there isn't an additional fee on top of the fees that were already paid. They were paid at the time that this project was initially constructed. Were these brand-new units being constructed as condominiums, they would pay the Quimby fee as opposed to the development impact fee. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Baxter? I do, I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
On page seven, number 11.
Second eleven.
And it says that the handicap parking place, which was apparently required for an apartment.
No. No, ma'am. Go ahead. I know where you're going with it, but that's, I know exactly.
Isn't required for a condo? Because it doesn't have to be marked and signed. So how is it then for and therefore a handicap parking place if it's not marked or signed?
There's one required, but for some reason they had marked two as required. So where they had marked the two, and so the, when we reviewed it, we were questioning why do you need two handicap? Because what happens is when there's, when there are four units, you need the, that one handicap, but you also need a guest parking space. So the two compete for each other. So if it's marked handicap, you don't have a guest.
Well, I think this is written incorrectly then.
I passed it up the line and it was passed back down. So this is the way.
I think it was an oversight because it says, if I may read it.
Yes, ma'am, please.
That the one required handicap parking space shown on the building plans shall remain dimensioned to meet handicap parking space requirements, but shall not be marked with a handicap parking space symbol.
Yes.
The one remaining one.
That's correct.
Then it says, a second marked one is not required. It may remain, but it shall not be marked. So you now have no marked handicap spaces.
That is correct. Building and safety, correct, you're correct. Building and safety and planning had worked out this policy because of two competing code interests. One is the handicap space being marked and one is the need for guest parking. So the two are competing. When you have four units, you need one guest. You also need a handicap. So when the projects are developed, they only give us one extra to meet that one requirement because the two become interchangeable. So the building and safety said is, you give us a dimensioned handicap space and you don't have to mark it.
Okay.
We followed up on that and I apologize, I guess I was not, I was inaccurate when I told you the first part. There is one required for handicap. There's also a requirement for the guest. The two compete. The two departments got together, kind of hatched out, dimensioned as handicapped, but don't mark it. Otherwise, no one will ever park there unless.
They're handicapped.
Unless they're handicapped.
Well, isn't that the idea, though?
That's what I was thinking.
But we also need someplace for the guest.
But you do have, in this case, what you're telling me is that if you have, if you have four and below, then you have a guest as well as a handicap, one of each.
That's the ideal. That would mean they would have the extra, but because they have.
But they do have two.
They have the three units, three, when you have, let's go back and let's look at your report here.
You have 11 parkings plus the handicap or the guest right here.
That is correct, sir.
And you need two and a half, two and a half per code, by code, you need two and a half per unit.
When you have three-bedroom units, you need two and a half parking spaces per unit.
Right.
You start adding that up, then you come up with 10 spaces required.
And then there is one left. In other words, they only had 11, not 12.
That's correct.
And that's both a handicap and?
A guest.
All right.
So they, because they have three-bedroom units, they require the two and a half parking spaces. And so that comes up to 10 spaces to be divided among the four units.
Sure.
Then you need one guest. You need one handicap. So we recognize that quite a while ago and we kind of was, building and safety and planning were going back and forth on it. So we came up with, gave us the dimensions, but you don't have to mark it for this one. Then when you get into the requirement for two handicapped, then we start, then we start working that out differently.
So in other words, this is, this is, this is a non-designated handicap space.
That's basically what it is, sir. It allows someone to park there without, without being in, if you're a guest, you can park there.
Especially if you're a handicap guest.
And if you're a handicap guest, you can park there.
Now, I have a question. I don't mean to be facetious now.
No, it's all right, sir.
If a handicap parks at that space, is this, well, we don't know if this is a soft radiantian or not, whether or not a lift will be available?
There is a lift, sir. In fact, we have as one of the conditions over here. Under building and safety, the covenants, conditions and restrictions shall include the maintenance and repair of the lift, number 25.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This was worked out with the building official and senior staff in planning. When it first occurred, back when, when this issue was required.
And I'm assuming this is consistent with other four units?
Yes, sir.
That have been built, that similar thing has been done?
Yes, and it's, it's been within recent years. This is when it's occurred.
May I, Madam Chair, suggest perhaps not for this project, and maybe this already is behind the eight ball on it, but in future, and this is something for staff to consider. Why can't you have, if you are, and I know you are not going to have too many subdivisions that are four and below, but why can't you have it marked in, in half dimensions as handicap and half dimensions as guest? And comment with the language that allows for both?
Two, two spaces, one free.
Know how you mark your handicap spaces? The blue with the.
Yes, yes.
Why can't you have half of the space marked as such and the other half simply saying guest?
I think that's for another time, right?
That's what I said.
Quite an interesting thought.
But that's what I said, is for staff to think, think on it.
entertain.
So if there are no other questions on our creative use of handicap spaces?
It is creative.
Do we have a motion?
It's consistent, I know what I'm talking about.
I move that upon consideration of tentative tract number 71786 and after reviewing the records, files, reports and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to said tentative tract, that tentative tract number 71786 is hereby approved, subject to compliance with the state subdivision map act, chapter 16.16 and 16.32 of title 16 of Glendale municipal code, title 30 of the Glendale municipal code and the 27 additional conditions listed below. And the Planning Commission hereby makes each and all the following findings of facts as listed.
Second.
All right, we have a second, but I did not open the public hearing. I do have an applicant here. Do you wish to speak? I will.
I'm okay.
All right. Apologize.
You're ahead.
So we have a motion and we have a second. May I have a roll call?
Commissioner Astorian.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Shitz.
Aye.
Commissioner Yessiah.
Yes.
And Chairperson Landrigan.
Yes. I, this motion has passed. We will move on to the next. I do apologize. We have our final. We have our final, no new business. We have our new business is Rossmoyn Historic District. It is a recommendation to the City Council from us regarding establishment of a historic district overlay zone. This is the zone change to create the Rossmoyn Historic District Overlay Zone. We have the map, and we have a staff report from Mr. Jay Platt.
Good evening. This is the fourth historic district that the Planning Commission has considered in the last few years, but there's been a bit of a lull, so I'm not sure that any of you, perhaps Commissioner Sheets, heard one of the previous ones. But what I'd like to do is just present a brief overview of the background of the historic district, why the proponents, the people who live in the neighborhood, suggested to us that we should look at Rossmoyn as a potential historic district, and then just explain where we are in the process and what the commission's vote means. I have a feeling pretty much everyone is familiar with the Rossmoyn neighborhood, where it's located, just west of Glendale Avenue and Verdugo Road in the foothills of northern Glendale. This will be by far our largest historic district if it's approved. There are 504 parcels that are included in the district, that includes 503 single-family homes, as well as Nibley Park, which you can see kind of as the heart of the district, and that's an original feature of the Rossmoyn subdivision and will be included as part of the designation if City Council votes for it. We were, worked carefully with the applicants in determining an appropriate boundary for the proposed historic district. In general, when there's a subdivision where there was one developer responsible for the creation of a neighborhood, the street layout, the conditions or the covenants for the construction in that area, we try to follow that as closely as possible. In the case of Rossmoyn, you can see the boundary was chosen that doesn't incorporate all of the southern part of Rossmoyn or the Royal Boulevard section, which was previously, most of which was previously designated as a district, but we chose a boundary that followed the Verdugo Wash because this area to the south is somewhat compromised by changes in the neighborhood, the construction of the 134, whereas the Rossmoyn section is very much intact and retains a lot of its original character, which we'll see in a minute. In 1923, the area was bought from the estate of Judge Ross, and hence the name Rossmoyn, and was subdivided by the Haddock-Nibley Company. Previously, they had done the Acacia Hills subdivision, which today we call Adams Hill. So that was their first foray in the city. The Rossmoyn subdivision took that much further in terms of incorporating aspects of the Garden City movement with winding street patterns, a focus on the design of the properties, a focus on even the amenities like having concrete streets and uniform street lighting. So it's kind of a full package, which isn't the case with all of our other historic districts. It's definitely not a requirement, but it makes Rossmoyn unique in the grouping that we have of historic districts today. Here's another shot from the newspaper, just showing how, how well-marketed the area was, ideal place to live, pictures of the houses, and this was pretty common back in the 20s when Glendale was really booming to have ads like this. Rossmoyn seemed to have a preponderance of ads, it was kind of more heavily advertised than a lot of other areas. And here's an early photo showing some of the earliest houses, the house in the center, perhaps you know, is the Homeland Estate, which is not included as part of the district. But you can see here, this is Ethel, Ethel Street running along here, and some of the early development in the neighborhood. And what's especially cool is the advertising they used to make everyone know where Rossmoyn was, they put signs up just like the Hollywood Land sign, or as well. Here's a shot of what Nibley Park looked like in the early days, obviously it's changed since then. Here's a close-up showing Judge Ross's orange fields, which covered the entire area before the subdivision, so this area didn't yet get developed, and then a shot of the well-known streetlights that kind of are very typical of Rossmoyn. We have, based on a lot of the covenants, there was a requirement that every house have a, have, most of the houses have gabled roofs to avoid kind of flat roofs and structures that didn't have the kind of period revival historic character. And we have a great collection of Spanish colonial, French, English Tudor, American colonial, Monterey, and those are all the 20s and 30s styles that were popular in Glendale. The period of significance for this district was identified as, by the historic consultants, who I'll mention in a minute, as 1923 to 1950. So that brings in some of the post-war era housing, which completed the district after the lull during World War II where there was pretty much no construction. So that brings the minimal traditional and the ranch-style houses into the neighborhood. What's especially interesting in Rossmoyn is how well these kind of styles, it's also true of many of our other neighborhoods, but they really merge nicely into a cohesive feel on the street. I'm not sure if the commission, I already, I included this as one of the exhibits in your package to explain the process that we go through with historic districts. I can explain this if you'd like, or you might just be satisfied to know this is the second-to-last stop. So, is there any interest in? Nope, very good. As, as part of the historic district process, the city retains a historic preservation consultant to study the area. We can't just kind of look at it and say, sure, yeah, that's a historic district. We have to have kind of a rational basis for making the determination. And the historic preservation, or, I'm sorry, the historic district overlay ordinance has several strata of requirements that any neighborhood has to meet before it becomes a district. There are nine criteria for designation, and our consultants, who are LSA associates, found that this district meets six of the nine. So that more than meets the requirement in the ordinance that one criteria at least be, be met. And then finally, there's an individual survey of each house. So we had surveyors on the street who were looking at every property, and they're doing several things in that. They're looking to see what style the house is, they're identifying what the historic character-defining features are of the property, and then they're also making a determination whether the property contributes to the historic character of the proposed historic district. And the idea of a contributing structure is one that was built within the period of significance, 1923 to 1950, and then also hasn't been changed, it hasn't lost its historic integrity. Doesn't mean they're completely pure and never been touched, it just means they have a lot of the features that they originally had. And that's an important thing to note for, for the public as well as for the commission, that historic districts don't freeze a neighborhood in time. As they've changed to the point we are today, they're going to continue to change. The idea is that those changes are made with, with an eye toward maintaining the historic character of the neighborhood, and we're only looking at changes made that are visible from the street. So interior changes or changes to façades at the back that we can't see are not under the design guidelines for historic districts. What was interesting with Rossmoyn, when the survey was completed of the 503 single-family houses, 413 actually were contributors. This is a very high rate for a historic district in any city, so that's 82%. The ordinance requires that it be 60%, and you can see on the, the map on the left, the green properties are the contributors, and the non-contributors are very, you know, distributed throughout, there's no kind of groupings of them or anything that would suggest that there were any areas that might not fit into the district. And then just to, to take us to where we are today of, of the last few steps in this process, the historic districts in general are, it's very much a citizen-driven process. We are waiting for people in the neighborhoods to come to us and say, we think our neighborhood's great, we'd like to make it a historic district. The proponents of this district have been working for over two years to get us to the point where they're before the Planning Commission, and then ultimately City Council. There are also petitions in the process, there are two petitions, one asking the city to conduct a survey, the second one, which was just completed a month and a half ago, is asking the City Council to actually designate the district. So when the petition was submitted to HPC last month, it had 359 properties represented, and the idea is that the owners of the property have to sign, it can't just be a single owner of a parcel that's owned by more than one person. So the owners of 359 houses signed the petition, that represented 71%, and that meets the 50-plus percent requirement of the ordinance. And finally, the commission should note that while there are people who live and own property in the neighborhood who do not personally support the district, there's been no formal opposition to the district in terms of filing an opposition petition, or even a lot of just kind of anecdotal information that there's, there's a lot of active opposition. So in terms of your vote today, this will be a recommending vote to the City Council, just as Historic Preservation Commission's vote was. At their last hearing, they voted unanimously to recommend that City Council designate the district. That's the report.
Thank you, Mr. Platt. Do they have any questions? Mr. Lee?
Just a personal curiosity, I know you received grant to, to the, the survey by outside consultant, how much did it cost?
The survey cost $25,000, a little less than $25,000, which was a remarkable price for a survey of an area this large. The grant was for $10,000, so the city cost was about $15,000 for the survey of 504 parcels. I can't say, I can't promise or say that we can expect to ever get that again for future historic districts, but we were very pleased with the price and the quality of
If there's other districts that come up, does the city just have to wait until there's the money for it?
We go to City Council for an authorization, so what we do is we, we accept the nomination from the neighborhood, and we go through the process to where we have them do the first petition, which is asking for the survey. If they weren't able to get the 25% required for that, then we wouldn't move forward. So if we get that petition back, then we go, we put out a request for proposals, and then we look at the, the best bids, we decide on one of the top three bidders, and then we take that to City Council with the request. We don't, we don't have a budget item.
You don't, but you don't have a budget for, like, historical districts, the city?
No, it's, the applications are inconsistent, we can't predict it from year to year, so.
Mr. Lee, and then Mr. Fo.
Yeah, one more question. I know this is a city designation for the historical preservation area. I know the state has one, and the federal has one. What is the procedure from here? Is this up to then also the neighbors to take it up to state, to be designated, and also?
Yeah, the, the state and federal designation are also kind of citizen-driven, in some cases, cities have gotten involved in that. We tend to think, because we have land use review authority over historic districts at the local level, which doesn't exist at the state or federal level, it's kind of not necessary to do that. If the, if the district proponents wanted that just as kind of an honorary kind of level of recognition, they could do that. But at the local level, we have the, the ability to maintain the character of districts for, for decades to come.
Because I know there's a program with the federal, it's called Preserve America? I, I thought that was a, you know, for the significance of just recognition.
Yeah, we, we've looked into becoming a Preserve America city, but we haven't done that yet.
Okay.
Mr. Fo.
I don't mean to disrupt the flow of your questions, but I do want to note that Mr. Platt is being kind of dishonestly modest here in terms of Commissioner Yessiah's question about how do we fund these surveys. He's done a tremendous amount of work and been very, has been very resourceful in getting volunteers, using his own expertise, using past surveys that he and people on staff he's worked with have updated on their own without having to go to City Council for any monetary requests. Not that he's going to be able to do that in every instance, I don't want to set that as an expectation, but I do want to note his really hard work and his resourcefulness.
Well, Madam Chair.
But if I may, if I may note, that was, what Mr. Fo is referring to is for other historic districts. This historic district was funded, you know, through the grant and through city funds, and there was, and then I'll, I'll shift this over to these guys, the, the neighborhood proponents in this district really made a tremendous effort because of the size of the area. It's very impressive how, how much work went into that from the, from the citizen side.
Commissioner Astoria?
I was about to thank him for his and he stopped me cold in my tracks. But I, no pun intended, there is historical precedence now as far as this monies and the grants and so forth. Hopefully it'll be repeated, and thank you for your commitment to, to the historical districts.
Well, if we have no more questions for Mr. Platt.
I do have one last question. The non-contributor laws, they're still obliged to
Yeah, they're
Under the, they still need
Guidelines.
Yeah, we, we have a set of historic district guidelines that look at the style of a house and, and the various parts of the house. Non-contributors, we don't focus as much on the style, as much as just making sure that the pieces hang together and don't deviate a lot from the, kind of the existing character. So that it's a little more open in terms of what the owner of a non-contributor can do under the guidelines.
Any other questions? All right, well, I'm opening the public portion of the hearing, and, which I didn't the last one, which I'm really sorry, but we have, for our first speaker, Lorna Vartanyan.
Yeah?
Good afternoon.
Chair Landrigan, it's a pleasure to appear before you, members of the commission and staff. My name is Lorna Vartanyan, I'm president of the Rossmoyn Mountain Homeowners Association and co-chair of the Rossmoyn Historic District Committee. And I am thrilled to be here today because, as Jay mentioned, this is the ninth milestone we need to pass out of 10 in order to get a historic district. And that said, it has been a long and incredible journey, which has taken a lot of community effort, coordination, commitment, and countless hours of volunteer time to get us to this point. To put things in a little bit of a context, we began this process two and a half years ago in October of 2009. We started by dividing our proposed district into 20 areas of about 25 homes each, and we found 20 wonderful neighbors to help volunteer as lot captains. And so with our notebooks and our city guidelines and enthusiasm, we started knocking on doors. Over the past two and a half years, we've done three full canvases of all 503 homes in the neighborhood, and each of those has required multiple visits to each home. Our final petition, which requests a zone change and which you are reviewing today, requires a minimum of 50% of homeowners to sign, but as you've already seen, we've collected signatures from 71%, and those signatures didn't come easy. This process has also made us keenly aware of how many different elements create a neighborhood, and the challenges that are difficult to overcome when trying to collect this many signatures, such as elderly persons who can't get to the door, families who are very busy and hardly ever home, vacancies, rentals, and inevitably couples who have differing opinions. But ultimately, it is the unique qualities of our architecturally rich and intact neighborhood which are admired by residents and visitors alike, and which are a testament to the history of this area. And these are the things I believe propelled a group of neighbors to come together and overwhelmingly support the preservation of our neighborhood. I hope you would agree that Rossmoyn is worthy of protection, and I think Alex Nibley would be proud of us all. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Sean Buzell. And if I misspoke, please correct me.
I will, thank you. Madam Chair and members of the commission, my name is Sean Buzell, and I am a member of the Board of Directors of the Glendale Historical Society, and the Glendale Historical Society supports the designation of the Rossmoyn neighborhood as an historic district. The Rossmoyn Historic Source, Historic Resources Survey, prepared by LSA associates, which I believe is Exhibit E in the staff report, really does a wonderful job of comprehensively documenting the history and architecture of the Rossmoyn neighborhood, and provides a truly compelling description of how the neighborhood undoubtedly meets the criteria for designation as an historic district. And as, as Mr. Platt mentioned, it, it fulfills six of the nine criteria, which really is, is quite impressive. The, the neighborhood really is an unusual, was an unusual development in, in that it was so comprehensive, and all, all the design, the marketing, and everything came together to create this, this really rare example of, of a 1920s through 1950s Los Angeles neighborhood. Also, the, the architecture is, I'm sure we're all familiar with that, the architecture in the neighborhood is, is absolutely charming, the variety of, of styles that are, that are present there, and it really, it, it all hangs together very well, as, as Mr. Platt mentioned. I, I don't live in the neighborhood, I live a few blocks over, closer to Brand, but I consider all of this to be part of the neighborhood, and it really just, to, to preserve this section of the neighborhood really enhanced the, the whole broader Rossmoyn area, as well as, as the city of Glendale. And as, as Mr. Platt noted in the report, the survey notes as well, the neighborhood is incredibly intact, you know, with 82% of the properties qualifying as contributors. That's, that's really a notable achievement. So in light of, of these findings, the Glendale So in light of these findings, the Glendale Historical Society urges the commission to recommend establishment of the Rossmoyn Historic District. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buzell.
Commission, my name's Harry Zavos, and I'm appearing here as a chair of the Historical Preservation Committee of the Rossmoyn Mountain Homeowners Association, and I have very little to add to what Lorna said, except to say that she accurately described the prodigious task that it is to survey 500 homes, and to have to go back over and over and over and over again to get people home, and sometimes people are home, but they won't answer. And then when they answer, they tell you they're renters and they can't sign the petition. But all of that effort was because we felt we had a real gem in our neighborhood. And it wasn't just our opinion. When the historical survey was being done by the professional, Lorna and I bumped into her, and she said that she found this neighborhood to be the most architecturally rich and intact neighborhood that she had ever surveyed of its kind. And if you watched her testimony before the, right, she was equally enthusiastic and glowing in her comments about the character of this neighborhood, which we believe is an asset for the entire city. And as Lorna has said, any number of people have worked very, very hard, they've done their part. The Historical Preservation Commission has done its part to move it along, and now it's in your hands to move it along and to ensure that this asset, this aesthetic and historical asset of the city will continue to be such.
Thank you, Mr. Zavos.
Commissioners, staff, thank you for the time. My name is Zanku Armenian. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Rossmoyn Mountain Homeowners Association, and also obviously live there. I live in a 1928 Spanish house that's been wonderfully restored, and I will say that, you know, as an American of Armenian heritage, history has a unique place in our culture, and the appreciation and respect for history is something that is incredibly important for any community. And so I think in your consideration of designating the Rossmoyn area as a historic district, I think we would be making a very important statement by doing so in respecting the roots and history of the city of Glendale. I have three, as I've written in my column in the Glendale News Press, I have three olive trees that date back to the original groves in that area, and every day that I wake up and I see those trees, it gives a very special feeling of the uniqueness of the community in which I live. And I believe, you know, you as a commission have to constantly struggle between maintaining character and integrity of neighborhoods while achieving progress, because the world evolves, and that is a unique and difficult task that is always, is always before you. But I think the historic districting strikes a good balance of both respecting the integrity of this sort of neighborhood, putting some parameters in place, making a statement about it, but at the same time, allowing for some room for the neighborhoods to continue to progress within the character of that neighborhood, and I think that's a really important thing to achieve. And I think Lorna Vartanian was very, very modest in her statement. If it weren't for her incredible project management, and what I mean by that is making sure we're all on task and achieve the objectives, we would not have gotten there without her leadership. So I think she deserves a special appreciation for that, and I'm proud to be a part of that effort. So I look forward to your support in the program. I will say that it's important for people to understand the difference between the Mills Act and historical districting, so perhaps Mr. Platt could, for the sake of the public record, and for those who might be viewing this proceeding, could distinguish that, because that's something that often came up. People were afraid of the restrictions it might place. But I will say, even with the people who I encountered who did not want to sign the petition, they all respected the effort, and they appreciated the homeowners' association and the neighborhood's effort in doing so, so they weren't necessarily opposed, and I think that's what's reflected in you not seeing any opposition. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I have no more cards, so if that's a mistake, you have a few moments to slip it to me. But seeing none and no movement, I will ask the members if they have any questions for any of the speakers.
Questions, sir.
All right.
I will make a quick comment.
Can I close the public?
Sure.
I will now close the public portion of the meeting. Mr. Sheets, please start.
Although my comments could never be as eloquent as the group that's here representing the historic process, I do want to take the time to mention again the efforts of Jay and his team in the city. Each one of these processes, each one of these packages that comes before us is so complete and so thorough that it makes, this is a fun part of this commission, although I really appreciate all the aspects of what we do, this is a fun part. It's really enjoyable. And I just want to thank you for doing that. Anything that brings a community together, it renews my faith in homeowners' associations, and to see an association that puts such an effort together, followed through, and is almost to the objective, I just commend you for that, and it really makes me proud to be a part of the city of Glendale. So I just wanted to get those comments in. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Well, I do have a comment. This is the largest district we now have, am I correct?
Yes.
Which is phenomenal, because when we first had the Glendale Historic District discussion, it was quite contentious, and it was a very small area, and I think the understanding that neighborhoods have of the value this adds to their homes and to them as actually citizens of a larger area than their lot and that community. The character of, you know, this neighborhood is, it's just wonderful. And when I drive my friends from out of town through here, I always take them through the neighborhood, and I also, I go up Royal too, but, you know, I always go down Ethel because I think Ethel's just lovely, and I know that Lorna lives on Ethel. But what I would like to say is that Lorna and Harry Zanku and all of you all who did this, what a great, well-done job. I just have to tell you, I know that's a very large area, it was an act of love, and the character of the district is going to be hopefully approved by the council, and hopefully approved by us, but you all did a fabulous job, and I just want to commend you. I know how hard it is to be out there, to knock on people's doors and to talk to them about it, and then to go by and take pictures of their houses. And you all did it, and you did it with a lot of great support from the neighborhood. You should be very proud. If there are no other comments, may I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. And the motion is the one that is included in our package. I move the planning commission of the city of Glendale, after having reviewed and considered the material current record relative to proposed Rossmoyn Historic District overlay zone, does hereby recommend to the city council that the overlay zone be adopted as proposed.
Second. May I have roll copy?
Commissioner Astorian?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheets?
Yes.
Commissioner Yosian?
Yes.
Your person, Landrigan.
A hoo-ha, yes. Thank you very much.
Is that your first hoo-ha?
That is my first hoo-ha. You know, I never was in the military, but it seemed appropriate. So our, the item that is to send to the council, the ordinance to establish Rossmoyn Historic District Overlay Zone has passed. Thank you very much. We will continue with our agenda items. We have the Community Development Department updates.
We have no updates at this time.
Comments from commissioners. Mr. Astorian, would you like to talk about designing bi-designed handicap parking spaces, or would you like to?
My suggestion would be absolutely for staff to look into it, that's all. Because I do know that condominium subdivisions for less than five units is really not often that you come across one, so. But nonetheless, may behoove the staff to look into that, to have it on a split identification for the space.
All right. So any other comments? Yeah, I think it's.
I agree, I think it's a good idea. I'd like to understand it better, cause some thoughts on this last issue, so I think it's something that I'd like to hear more about.
Well, I have a comment, and I would just like it to be a discussion item. Many years ago, when I was younger and didn't color my hair.
About three years ago?
Yeah, it was, I kind of just lighten it a little now. But I worked for the city of Santa Monica, and in our city, we do not provide conditional use signs or any of the signs there, we have the applicant make them themselves. And other cities provide them, and that way they're the consistent, and I'm just curious as to why we require each applicant to do it. It seems like an awfully expensive endeavor, and if we had them and sold them, we would know they were the consistent signs, we would also know that somebody had purchased it, and all the material was on it. And I'm just curious.
Well, this isn't agenda, so I.
Can we talk agenda and then talk?
I mean, I can just give you a factual answer, that the requirement that the applicants provide their own notice signs came when we switched to the larger three-foot-by-four-foot size sign. And I, my recollection at the time is that there was just a reluctance on part of the city to get into the sign-making business. What we do is give them the exact wording of what should be on there. We email, we write it up for them, we email it to them, we give them dimensions of what the sign is supposed to look like, we give them now even a picture of how other people have posted their signs, in case, just a visual representation will help people get it done correctly more often.
But could we agenda it and maybe discuss it? I think that it seems like a good discussion item. I'll just leave it at that.
If you had any particular issues about how it's turning out now, that would be helpful.
I just think that it's a cost to the applicant that seems, I mean, we paid for it when it was like 11 by 17 or something, and when it got bigger, I think that the fact that it's consistent, and you know that somebody has it, and then it goes up, I've heard a lot of continued items, and I'm wondering if it's because they've, they're trying to print this sign or something. I'm just curious. I think that other cities, I would like to know what other cities do. I think Santa Monica's always required a very large sign. So those are, I just, to me, it seems like that we, we're not an easy city to get permits in, and some of these, some of these things would be a very simple element for us to assist our applicants. Just wanted to have the discussion. We've agendaed. Thank you. Any other comments? Any activities coming up? All right.
Moved or we adjourn?
So moved.